This is our recess meeting, our February recess meeting. I'm gonna go ahead and we're gonna open the meeting up with a prayer. I'm gonna ask Supervisor Trainer if he'll open us up with a prayer.
Let us pray. Our Father in heaven, we come first of all to say thank you. We thank you, O Lord, for the opportunity to be here tonight and to discuss the business of Tewah County. We thank you for the success, and we thank you for the ups and the downs that we've experienced, O Lord, as we try to do the business in the best we can. We ask you your blessings and the good in every person that's here. And we pray, O Father, that we conduct business in a way that you be well pleased. We thank you for your daughter and son, Jesus. We ask you just remember our military personnel and remember all those who are affected by the changes in the weather and all the other things that are going on. And Father, once we leave this place, give us traveling grace to go our separate ways and find things in order where we may go. In Jesus' name we pray. Let us all say together.
Amen.
Thank you Supervisor Trainer.
Thank you.
Moving right along. Hey Supervisor Williams. We do have our citizens' comment period. This is a time that any citizen can come up here for up to three minutes and address the board about any concern, comment that you may have.
Good evening. My name is Allen Tom. You know, it's good that our two friends, cousins, sister, brother, and children are with situations with Lake Land, and we are the backbone of the family. Two father, Howard, my mom is ninety years old. She is an empty. And she continued to pray for it. His mom is eighty-seven. That's my cousin. And we are continuing praying that the blood won't be on County hands, you know, life and loss. Thank goodness that we bound in time. The clock is ticking. If we wait and lives lost, we gonna make it come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trainer. Is anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Rosella Austin, and I'm an officer of the Educational Association of East Tewah County Schools. And I'm here today. We made a request last fall, and I'm just following up and checking on the status of your assistance, our organization, in funds and upkeep of the property. We are growing an expired organization, and we want to do things that will benefit our community. And we just want to know if you all are gonna be able to help us out this year. We got an upcoming event which will be June 10th on this summer. We're gonna have it at the campus, and we just wanna know if you all would help support us.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
What was the name of the school again?
Ms. Austin. Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Charles Lawrence, and I'm also with the Educational of East Tewah County. And I did have three questions, but one was already asked. But I was gonna read the other two questions, and then I'll let y'all elaborate on them, you know, the best you can, though there's no way to stand. Also, last year, we have asked to clean up the debris in all the overgrowth, undergrowth around the county, on that building and the yard, but we didn't get an answer. But we realized that approval was required of the school board as well as state legislature. And again, third question, we are a growing organization, and we have several upcoming events through this year if we can, you know, if we can do it. And also, you know, we requested, uh, request to get into schools, and we would like for y'all to elaborate on where you stand in trying to make that process. Hold on.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. I'm Reverend Austin. I gotta ask a question, maybe two. One question is, why am I paying eight hundred dollars taxes on the same place that they keep talking about? It's closed, and the building is falling. And the second thing on my taxes is eight hundred dollars for school.
Have you talked with Allen?
I have.
Have you talked with the tax assessor?
Not this year. I talked to him the last two years.
All right, well, I can get with the tax assessor on that, Mr. Reverend Austin. I don't, first I've heard of this.
He's not talking about that one building. He's talking about taxes for education. He's talking about school taxes in general. He's not talking about that one building. I mean, he's saying that one building, but it's not. It's for schools. It's the taxes for all schools, and we have buildings that are up and operating for education. They're just pointing it to that one building and, uh, on Moore High Road.
Okay. Is that what you were saying, Ms. Austin?
Yeah, they say school. And the school is falling. So why am I paying taxes?
Well, here's the, the misnomer is, is that's not our property. That is actually owned by the school district.
Okay. So I have to pull further.
Well, I, I would ask a question to anyone is, have you addressed the school board about this issue as well? I know we, y'all have come to us. I'm asking, have you addressed the owner of the property, which is the school district?
Okay.
But, but not to get too far off into the, go ahead, go ahead. I'm sorry.
You may be fixing to say.
Go ahead, and.
Mr. Austin, the taxes that you're paying more than likely is for all school taxes, not just for the, that particular one. So it's probably all, but I'm, I'm not certain it's. I don't know that at your age, not to say that you're up in age, but at your age, there may be a, an issue of whether or not you qualify for not getting any taxes on your particular piece of property. I don't know that school taxes are exempt from that. However, the eight hundred dollars that you're paying right now is not just for the Moore Heights, for Tewah, the whole school district. So it, it may look like you're paying for one.
Yeah, they got it on the paper, Moore High.
May I look at it?
I didn't bring it.
Okay. Tell you what, if you and I will get together, I'll help you with it, and we'll see if we can figure it out.
Thank you. Another question. When do bailiffs get a raise?
That's a state.
Sixteen years, and nobody said that.
Maybe they ask him.
Is we working on getting a raise for bailiffs and other court officials this year? It's a legislative thing. It's not, unfortunately, I wish I could push it off over here, but it's not, it's not.
No, I've been pushing it, and nothing happened.
The last few years, you're right, nothing has occurred. If that's a legislative thing, they pay what is required legislative.
That's all we can do.
It's been sixteen years since I got one. That ain't never happened. I just wanna know if it just means.
You all deserve one. You deserve one. It's just that not out.
We can't do, the state legislation has to say that we can give you a raise.
Okay. But we used to need a written legislation. And see about.
There he is. We talked to him about it at length. But then again, he's only one officer, you see. So.
I think they are working on getting raises.
Right.
And others.
All right. If anybody has a search rate, you do it.
All right. Anyone else?
My name is Chris Taylor, Supervisor District Five. Speaking tonight, I'm a member of NAACP, which is a part of the Tewah County Complete Count, Census Complete Count Committee. And we need to make sure that you all really understand that we're working hard to make sure everyone is counted. Did you know our Tewah County was on the sixty-eight percent counties last, uh, ten years ago? So that's like thirty-two percent of the money that we lost here in the county that could go for the road, that could go for the schools. We doing the same thing with the city. We gonna do the same thing with the school board, 'cause school board can reach out to everybody. What we hoping for, and get a flyer, you see a sample of the flyer I gave these one of your supervisors. If you have mail out, but I know you don't do mail out like the city. We gonna get with the city with the utility department to mail out. But if you have any control over the, uh, I know you don't have the water because of different associations, but you do have the garbage, right? Garbage, if we can get with you all to get a flyer in the mail out. Because we don't have that kind of cash to do it. We working for free. The committee, now you have people on the committee that are working for the census that get paid. So this is a request that you check out the flyer, and if it's okay, Ms. Hannah, Heather Hannah, is the county coordinator. She'll be back Wednesday or Thursday, and we get with Ms. Garrett or someone, and, uh, permission from these supervisors. Give her a, see if we can get a mail out to all the citizens in our Tewah County. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else? Good afternoon.
Hi, I'm here for two questions. I wanna know when will you complete your four-year-old plan, and who will it be a public hearing on it? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Moving right along, land site field, Mr. Walter.
May I just applaud from my seat, or is that in here, please?
If you could, well, sure, if you, if you need to.
Uh, I, I think everybody in the room will be able to hear me. I, I do have some handouts that I brought. Yeah, these, these are maps of the site that I'm requesting a letter from the board. My request is, I would like to open a rubbish landfill. A class one and class two rubbish landfill. There's over a hundred acres. It's outlined, I think, in white and red there. It borders Rock Hill Road and where Waldorf Road turns off Rock Hill Road, right there in the curve. I have two entrances to that property. I have visited with a land, rubbish landfill owner, Tim May, TMC of Timco in Saltillo, Mississippi. And I have studied his operation. I have explored the options with Clyde Pritchard about opening a rubbish landfill. The landfill, the former city slash county landfill, had been closed for some time. And we live just a half, quarter mile down the road from that site. So we have become very familiar with public rubbish, because it's been dumped on the side of our property, because people would come out, and they had no place to put it. So they would put it on our property, under the guise of darkness. Some of them didn't wait till it got dark. They just threw it out and ran. So I, I think this is a need, and I have property that I think fulfill the need. And that's my request. I would like to get a letter from the board supervisors that I can take before MDEQ and Clyde Pritchard and start the ball rolling, so we will have a rubbish landfill. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Walter.
The second question I would have at this point would be, first of all, whether or not, since we're contractually obligated into the, the particular.
Golden Triangle.
The Golden Triangle, and we've got members on this board, I don't know that we can give him a letter. However, with the direction from this board, I would make some inquiries and find out if that is a possibility and try to get an answer for y'all, if that's what you would have.
You can see the legality of it. I would like to see what the wishes of the city is also on this.
Yes, sir.
But I mean, this is the first time, Mr. Walter, and I appreciate you bringing this, but I don't think we at this moment can do that without doing our due diligence to the city.
I understand completely, and that's why I wanted to come forward to the board and explain my interest in establishing a rubbish landfill. And this is what I consider a starting point, and that's, that's why I'm here tonight.
I got you. So on this map right here, are you saying that the landfill would be the, the red box that you got here outlined, or is this the white box?
That, that would be not necessarily the landfill. The landfill could go east. There's over eighty acres east of that red box, where there's, I think there's twenty-six in the red box.
Yes, sir.
So Timco, Tim May, has a landfill, a rubbish landfill that's been in operation since nineteen ninety-four. And his acreage is fifty-seven acres. And the tornado that hit Tubalow, he, he's, he's the class one and class two. He can take debris, landscape debris. He can take demolition debris. He can take asbestos, MDEQ outlines to him. And they charge him a fee per ton every quarter. And this is paid to the MDEQ for their license. So it's all, it's all done the right way from the start, and is monitored by the MDEQ.
Good day.
I was gonna say, I, I do know, and, and there is a need, no doubt about it, but being on two garbage boards, I do know that there's statutes that dictate how you have to handle the rubbish and where you have to place, especially when you're dealing with asbestos-type rubbish.
Yes.
There's a lot of legality to running a, a landfill. So before we can give that letter, I, I think there has to be quite a bit of research done and guidelines.
I agree with you, sir.
But, but thank you, there is a need.
Sure.
Thank you for your attention.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Walter.
I'd like to offer a motion.
A motion for?
Uh, to allow, give Attorney Robinson permission to do the research and decide on whether or not we can move forward with creating a landfill on Mr. Walter's land and come back to the board with an answer.
Second motion. All right. Any more discussion on the matter?
Please, sir.
All right. All those in favor? Motion carries five of them. Thank you, Mr. Walter.
Thank you.
All right. Moving right along, industrial park interlocal agreements and resolutions, Mr. Higgins.
I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be brief and give most of my time to Mr. Payne. Y'all know we had a work session several weeks ago, and then a lot of you came to the county or the city's work session where we did, I guess, another version of the dog and pony show. Things are going well at the industrial park. You know, Garen's going out there. We got word last week from their contractor that they think they're ready to get started as soon as a quick rating. We'll figure out when that is. But we also made a proposal at those work sessions that we wanna do some stuff to jumpstart the park. We've got money left over in the park for the bonds, and we made a proposal that we wanted to build a hundred thousand square foot pad-ready site on the, on the first lot on the south when you turn in. TVA's given us two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to help do that pad. It'll cost about seven hundred thousand dollars in addition to that. You've got the money in the bond issue. Then we also wanna build another pad that will house a fifty thousand square foot spec building, expandable to a hundred thousand square feet. And we are working with AgriCell right now to get the agreements on that, where they will take their risk, they'll go borrow the money, they'll go build the spec, build the spec building and market it, but that we would, would give them the land and have the pad ready there to do it. We've got documents that do both of those tonight. Also at the work session, we talked about a, a project that we're working, that we anticipate to be fee and loop, and some, uh, some needs that we'll have to do, water and sewer and roads. And total bill on that's about seven million dollars. And we, at the work session, then at the city work session, and so if you attended, we, uh, we did the models and showed you how that works. And that document is here tonight for you to start the notice of intent to issue up to three and a half million dollars county share bonds for a fee and loop project. And we've got some pretty good handcuffs on it for you, for us, for, for the city, for everybody. And then I think the last matter, business Chris has got, is interlocal agreement between you and the city on how we will deal with these things. So we're gonna talk about getting approval for money for pads, building pads, one of which will be a pad marketed to a company, one of which will be a pad that we will build a spec building on, so when everybody approves, then with the notice of intent to issue the bonds for the fee and loop project and then the interlocal agreement, right? So he's the lawyer, I'm gonna let him cover it, make sure I don't say anything wrong, and I'll be here if you got any questions. Thank you.
We had submitted, as Joe mentioned, three different items to, to Emily and to Attorney Robinson Perp. We had last week. The first of those is the first issue Joe talked about, and that's authorizing the use of the existing bond proceeds that were issued, bonds were issued by the county and comparable bonds issued by the city in late twenty seventeen. There's still substantial bond proceeds that are left over and have not been expended on the industrial park yet. It would be for the county to authorize up to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars of those remaining bond proceeds to be used to build the two pads that Johnny mentioned. That's what I wanted to, it's really the first two parcels on the left as you drive into the park on three eighty-nine.
If you want to, I can go ahead and do that resolution now. All right.
This is exactly the same thing that you said.
With, with, one, one change. When I sent it out, I had put it in there at seven hundred thousand dollars. That's the total budget, one point four million the city can, what I had, and it's my math, I did not deduct from that the two hundred, almost three hundred thousand dollars in the TBA money. So I gave Ms. Garrett a revised resolution, and I have it lower than seven hundred down to five fifty.
And, and Rob, for the record, it went this way. We, we, he asked what the total cost of the pads were, and we told him, and, and we did not deduct the TBA grant out of it. So this is the, it's low, it's eight, it's two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
I wanted to say about that.
Yeah.
This is the updated resolution that I gave in copy of. The only difference is it says five hundred and fifty thousand, I'm saying a hundred thousand.
Which is a good thing.
Yeah. And, and Mr. Williams brought it to our attention, he was looking at the numbers, and I think that's the right number. And so we started figuring out why, and then figured out why. So thank you, Mr. Joe.
You gotta stare at those resolutions.
That's right.
But how much is TBA going to be?
Two seventy-five.
And the total of it's seven hundred thousand between our bond money and the TBA?
Well, no, the, the five fifty was. And this, and the city will have an identical resolution that they will take up for consideration tomorrow night. So it would be five fifty from the county, five fifty from the city, so both are splitting it equally as we've done all along the park. That's one, one million in total in the city and county plus the two seventy-five TBA. So it's almost, but not quite, one point four million.
Yeah. And TBA's only participating in the first half. They're, they're, they're not participating in both of them, they're participating in the first half.
All right. Any discussion on that? If not, need a motion in a second to approve that resolution.
Motion for approval on the five hundred and fifty dollars move forward, and realizing this money is already in place, it's not new money. So motion for approval on the five hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion.
Second that motion.
Five hundred and fifty thousand.
Not five hundred, no. Boy, if you can build a pad. All right, we got a motion and a second on the floor. Any more discussion on that? If not, all those in favor. All right, motion carries.
Second resolution for the board tonight is a resolution of intent to issue up to three point five million dollars of, of, our structure is to be the tax exempt and/or taxable bonds, will likely be taxable bonds for future project development assistance in the industrial park.
And this is if we get the project.
This is if we get the project.
Which would be?
This bond resolution is very, very similar, almost identical to the bond resolution that was adopted by the county back in twenty seventeen. The only substantive difference between then and now is then we talked about the fact we could use the bond proceeds under the Regional Economic Development Act if we got approval. We have since gotten approval, so we've acknowledged in the resolution that we could use the bonds for any purpose that the county could otherwise issue bonds and spend money on, and any purpose under the Regional Economic Development Act. Subject to, these have to be done in support of a project that goes in the industrial park, and they have to be done in connection with a project that is fee and loop, fee and abhorrent tax exempt on twenty seven thirty-one one oh four, with the understanding that that project is going to generate enough and incremental either abhorrent and/or fee and loop money to pay all of the debt service back on these bonds.
Any discussion on that? If not, I need a.
I'd like to offer a compliment. I thank Mr. Joe McGiggins for bringing the concept of fee and loop to our county. Thank you very much. Fee and loop is an excellent way to save taxpayers, taxpayers' money in paying, paying bonds back. Thank you for your insight in that. So I'm, I'm gonna, motion that we move forward with a bond for three point, three point five million for the county.
Motion by Supervisor Williams. Need a second.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Allen. Any more discussion?
You got any more supervisors down there?
If not, all those in favor. All right. Motion carries.
Just check.
All right.
The last matter that we had submitted for consideration is the approval of the interlocal cooperation agreement between the city and the county. We already have a Regional Economic Development Alliance agreement that dictates that both the city and the county will share equally in the cost of the park in connection with the expenditure of the original bond proceeds. This interlocal agreement applies to any future debt incurred by the city and the county. I'll just summarize it very quickly. Basically, it says if the city and the county both issue debt in equal amounts in the future for, to support a project going into the park, that the city and the county will share equally in any abhorrent taxes or fee and loop proceeds from the project that's induced using the bond proceeds. So the project that Joe mentioned, if we, the city and county issue bonds in support of that project, yep, then at that point, the city and the county would issue bonds in equal amounts. The fee and loop revenue, and ultimately the abhorrent tax revenue in that project would be split equally between the city and the county.
And that's whatever and ever and ever.
For, for as long as it comes from that project.
It's indefinite.
After the bonds are paid off, does it remain fee and loop, or does it go?
It goes on the boost as that were.
And where it will.
Yeah. And, and look, this isn't our original idea. You know, towns and counties, you know, strung around the state, and before we did Yokohama, Scott Ross was mayor of West Point, and Robbie Robinson was magistrate clerk. And they sat down and they, they worked out, hammered out this deal and said they're, they're partners. And, you know, I, I think, I think Columbus would wish that they would have done it with Loudoun County when they started doing some stuff. So it, it works out well, and we kinda borrowed and pigged back on what West Point did here.
Well, Joe Max, this, I mean, this is something I've been talking about for a long time. If we partner up and go fifty-fifty on a deal, we should enjoy the richest fifty-fifty.
Yeah. We say every man in a dollar, every man out a dollar.
There you go. Share the risk and share the reward. And this is a fair deal. Hey, we've got a good partner with the city. They've worked well with us also.
I would tell you, it reflects a very unique degree of cooperation that we just don't see much of in San Francisco.
I mean, it's honed both of them.
Between cities and counties.
Hey, you heard that. Any more discussion on that? Hey, I need a motion in a second. Got one by, the other supervisor's over here, we got Trainer, and then we got Ms. Brickley. We got a motion in a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. All right. Thank you much.
Thank y'all.
Right, the public hearing will be on March sixteenth, it'll be at the mid-March meetings. And if you will just get me, just email me a copy of these in the morning, we will take it here in publication tomorrow. Because we'll be doing the same thing with the city, we can do a vote. Vote for it.
And we'll be here.
March sixteenth. March sixteenth.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Joe.
Moving right along, and very patient, Ms. Kubine. You've seen the assessment changes in your packet, need a motion in a second to approve those, or any discussion on them?
So, move.
Motion by Supervisor Trainer. Second by Supervisor Miller. All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, I need another resolution for assessment changes on the additions and deletions, correct? Homestead additions and deletions. Got a motion, motion by Supervisor Trainer, second by Supervisor Howard, all those in favor? All right, motion carries, thank you. Additions and deletions.
Sorry.
All right, moving right along, Mr. Clyde Pritchard. With the Black Jack Road project.
Fresh boy we took bids on Black Jack Road on the thirtieth. We sought, voted to award the contract on construction. Gave that paperwork to State Aid. Took the bid amount, applied some contingency money, engineering fees, et cetera, but total project cost, total estimated cost of the project was five percent of the tenancy of the fees. Was nine million, five hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty-six cents. So, we were funding deficit, reached out to our neighbors, a lot of hard work from folks in the superstate, others. Assembly, I think, provided you some information in your packet on funding. With our additional contributions, we were still short five hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars, sixty cents. We talked to the office of State Aid, wrote construction, they have verified that we can use State Aid funds to make up this deficit. Airway James has also said these funds are currently available. My first request of the board is to execute an order that will allow the transfer of five hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars, sixty cents to this project from State Aid.
This is from our, this current term State Aid allotment. That's correct.
True. Month for approval?
Question. How much total are we getting, about two million, four hundred thousand dollars from State Aid and?
State Aid and LSPB?
Clyde, my intention is to request that that State Aid money go toward the replacement of the County Lake Dam. That's gonna be, that's going to be my request of our State Aid funds, that they be placed on the replacement of the County Lake Dam. That will get us halfway to where we need to be. Is there not another way we can make this five hundred, twenty-five thousand dollars from another funding source?
What would you recommend?
Well, we can, we can get it from, we can either, the bond issue, or do it, or we can go and draw a reserve fund and do it. Probably, I'm probably gonna get voted down on this one, but I'm gonna request that the State Aid money be placed on the County Lake Dam. Because the actual statute says that when we're in a unit system, that the monies should go to the most needed place first, and then thereafter be distributed. I know what we've done in the past, but what we've done in the past doesn't say anything about road vows, doesn't say anything about district assessed value. The statute actually says the money should be placed in the most needed place first, and then thereafter distributed. So, that's, that's what I'm going on. Attorney Robertson, would you?
Yes, sir, that is correct. Whenever, whenever we operate, we operate with the funds being used for the county as a whole, we're not, typically, you're just not supposed to be splitting everything, and it is a need space, that's the whole point of doing it the way we're doing it. I will say this, for further information, I'm in, and I do not want to suggest to this board that I'm guaranteeing this, but let me let you know what I'm up to. I'm attempting to get another two million dollars for this particular project. If we are able to get that two million dollars, and to give you kind of an idea of who we have helping us do that, the university has come to the table and they are helping us try to get the, and that should cover our shortfall. If it covers our shortfall, it will replace the money that we're taking from this fund, and it'll also hopefully replace some of the money that the universities have put into it. I do not want to, in any way, shape, or form guarantee this board that that will actually occur. So, your statement is well taken in terms of what you're suggesting and saying, but I did want to at least inform the board that that is the intent that I have going in terms of trying to help get this project finished. That is the university's intent to come back in and try to help make certain this is done. So, I don't want y'all to think that, that just because we do this, that we may, we may be able, and I put the word may out there, I'm an attorney, we may be able to replace those funds so that your, for your group plan is not. So, I do want to let y'all know that. Again, that is a big may, but we do have a partner in this with the university to help us do that, so. But your initial statement that, that the way we're supposed to split money is, is exactly the way we're supposed to do it. We're supposed to look at needs as a whole, and I don't want to take away from that.
I would expand just a little bit to Supervisor Howard and for the board to play. The way that your memorandum of understanding of the structure, the way this money would fund, is that the first money spent is actually the county's contribution to this project. And then MDA money kicks in. I know it's all going to go in pool. The State Aid money that we're talking about is, will cover essentially the five percent contingency in this project, which that would make it the last money spent if necessary. So, yes, we've got a four hundred and something on the project, but it could, as it could turn out, five percent contingency on a job this size is not a lot. That's to cover all the things that you don't know about, that might show up, that might happen. But it could also happen that you don't actually expend this money.
I do understand that, and this, and I appreciate, this is a project, Black Jack project, that I think needs to happen. It's a safety issue, that's why we're doing it, but it's not any more of a safety issue than out at Octavol County Lake. Attorney Robertson, I do appreciate your work and reaching out and trying to get partners, and we've been looking for funding sources for over four years now. But I did hear a lot of maybes and mikes, could, and possibilities, talking about this State Aid money. I do understand, Mr. Pritchard, that that is contingency money, that will be spent at the very end, if need be, but it might need be, and that money end up being spent, and then that's five hundred and some thousand dollars gone out of the State Aid money, that's this board will receive. So, again, my ask to this board is to go by the statute, and the statute says that when you're in a unit system of government, that all monies that come into that unit system be placed to the most needed place first, then thereafter divvy it up at center of the project. So, that's gonna be my stance, and I'm gonna try to stick to the statute. We may have to challenge the statute.
Sure.
I'm, I'm, I'm.
Second the motion.
I'm gonna second the motion. We got both of them down here, we're both gonna second the motion.
I'm glad you.
Supervisor Williams' motion.
Okay. Now, let me, I guess I have a little discussion on that, too. Last term, District One and District Four, we did Longview Road. And when I say we did Longview Road as a county, but I do know that our State Aid funds came from one and four, in essence, and left us short, left the citizens in District One short. We're gonna get Longview Road done, but on that motion and the discussion, the five twenty-five, seven seventy-three should be, in my opinion, split between two and five, because those are the districts that it, that it covers. And I get what you're saying, Supervisor Howard, as far as a need, but I know when the State Aid engineer comes into town, the paperwork that I get back, there's, there's things that need to be done on all districts, all the roads, and those are the State Aid roads, if they can, they come and they mark all the things that are deficient. I mean, Maiden Sturgis Road in my district is in terrible shape. You could certainly argue that there's safety issues with that, I mean, people have had ricks on it, just from the condition of it. So, I know, I understand what you're talking about.
No, 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 it's, you're not, because it's not my opinion, it's the statute.
Well, and I get what you're saying in the statute, but there's needs.
It's the statute.
And the paperwork that I get.
If we had it going to court, do you think that they would say a bad road takes precedent over a dam that's about to break? If we ended up in court with this?
We may differ on how we see how to fix the problem. In my opinion, the problem has been escalated because we, as a county, in the past, have tried to fix the problem, and we couldn't fix the problem. We created a bigger one. There's ways to remedy it.
There's no point in.
But I, to my point, yeah, to my point, the point is, there's, there's needs throughout the districts, throughout the county.
I just, one comment, I'm glad you clarified that that is contingency money. So, we really not spending State Aid money, not, not just straight off anyway, we need that, those funds to get the project started, basically what we're doing.
That's correct, but when we get the next status of funds from State Aid, this will show the five hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars, sixty cents allocation to this project. So, your available funds for other projects.
Will be the last five hundred and absolute.
By that one.
Because it's on escrow with MDA until this project is completed.
So, it could be used at all.
We have a project that we got out for bid, we've accepted the bid on, it's got a time limit for us to start, and we can't get bond money or any other money within that time before this project has to go up to the end game. We're gonna lose the project. The best way to get the project funded at this point is the way that we work it out here. Now, if they end up using the five hundred and twenty-five thousand for the project, then this, what other suggestions that y'all are making can be done past this project.
And just piggyback a little bit on what Emily said, one unique aspect about this project, and the timing is part of it also. If we go into rebid, I told her very clearly, I thought this project cost goes up a million dollars. But, again, back to the memorandum of understanding, the MDA agreement, these monies have to be on deposit before we can award this county. They have to be, we can't go back to State Aid and say we're gonna get this money, it has to be set in on the shelf or something. And this little mechanism that we found, that State Aid said these monies are now available to get back.
And that gives us time for wrong situation to hopefully materialize, for us to have our meeting next week on the dam, and these other things that's going on that is not as pressing as when this project bid date expires as it is right now. Because if we go out any further, if we leave this room without signing these contracts and approving this, we're not doing this project.
And I do understand that, and I'm not kicking against this project. What I am saying, that this can has been kicked down the road for over four years now, and every time it comes to the table, it's always the reason why we can't, it's always the reason why we should wait, it's always the reason why it's too much, but then we can go and do the same projects in the county that cost more for the same reason, and that's safety. So, again, I'm wondering why. I mean, and I want somebody, I want some supervisor that votes against it every time to just explain to me, maybe, maybe if you'll explain to me why, I can understand. But I need a good reason as to why.
Only five hundred and twenty-five thousand, I tell you, it's cheaper for me to, for the county to send State Aid money down there and let State Aid lose their interest on their money, as opposed to us taking it out escrow, we must lose an interest on our escrow money.
I understand that, I totally understand that. Again, I agree with the project. I don't agree with our approach at the County Lake. For over four years, we've known this, actually longer than that, given the research from Tess. I mean, everybody know what the situation is out there, you know? It, what it really boils down to, and I hate to say it, but what it really boils down to, hell, if few people get drowned out there, ain't no big deal. That's what it really boils down to, if you wanna hear the truth. It's, 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 it's not as important. Let it break, and then if we drown, then it'll be something done. Other than that, let's just kick it down the road, let's hope that we can get through this term and let somebody else worry about it. That's sort of where we at. And, and, and that's what it is. I mean, that's, that's what I've seen, that's what's been shown, that's the votes that has taken place. Look, I hope I can just sneak through this and let somebody else worry about it. You know, bother that? Because we voted, we voted to do quite a few projects in this county that exceeds this amount, but we find a way every time. But for whatever the reason, when it comes to the Octavol County Lake and the safety of individuals out there, it's always the less weight, less weight. We need to fix the road, I got a rough road. Don't worry about the dam breaking, we need to fix a rough road. I mean, that's it, that's it. But listen, I've chewed the fat on this law, and let's move forward, and we'll see what the statute says.
I guarantee you, if they decide to fund, if y'all decide to fund the dam, I will just as.
I didn't say, I know you would, I know you would, but it's not your call. It's, it's these votes sitting here to move forward.
We're not really in that for to fund the County Lake Dam. I mean, we couldn't start.
We've, we've, we've got money in place, but we're talking about reaching to spending some of that money that's in place now. I mean, at what point, at what point are we gonna? I mean, at what point, at what point are we gonna say, let's bubble down and get it done like we do all these other projects? I mean, it's just that simple.
Thank you Attorney Robertson for continuing to look for the two million that could possibly be used to offset some of the costs that we're talking about now.
Any more discussion? If not, we got a motion by Supervisor Williams, second by Supervisor Miller. Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, motion carries forward.
I have a board order. This is the order that actually authorizes a transfer of the state aid fund. John, that's in trip for you and Sharon.
Anything else?
Yes, I've got two more.
All right, go ahead.
Having done that, I also have a board order. This puts the funds in place to actually award the contract and establish the project fund for Black Jack Road, D C D double oh fifty-three fifteen bill. This is actual state aid board order that authorizes to move forward with the awards of burns.
So we need a board order, we need a.
This is board. That's right.
Need a motion and a second.
And this is award to burn, right?
This awards the contract that burns dirt.
So we need a motion.
This is a state aid order that allows.
Motion by Supervisor Miller, second by Supervisor Trainer, all those in favor?
This one's also in trip for you and Sharon.
Now, while we're on the road, having executed that, this is actually a contract that was in Burns' bid package. And I need an order to execute this contract. This will be signed by state aid, by myself, and also by the board. And it's in six copies, six weeks. This is Burns' actual contract.
Got a motion by Supervisor Trainer, second by Supervisor Williams. Any discussion? All those in favor, motion carries.
Excellent. What this will do is authorize Burns to get their additional bonds together, their subcontract agreements, and go ahead and start fabrication on things like the box cover. So this puts them in position to go.
Is that, is that it for you, Mr. Pritchett?
I've got two other items as the board got time.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I was going, go ahead.
One was just an update on the County Lake. We've been routine monitoring or surveying the lake today is about three feet from the low point that we had in February, which is about four feet from the elevation that we would like to cut the riser off. I see on your agenda, you've got consideration of proposals that we received from contractor. I would urge you to take action on that tonight. So if we win and we're lucky enough to get the lake level down again, we can have the contractor in a position to go cut the riser, which will help us keep the lake from getting back to a better level.
Okay.
Question, are you satisfied with the low proposal?
I am.
Make the motion.
Okay, so to that, yes, we need a motion and a second to approve.
The guy right here.
Motion by Supervisor Miller, second by Supervisor Trainer to approve.
Cutting the riser off.
The low bid of Burns' dirt to cut that riser off as soon as it gets to that level.
I don't know the file number.
Okay, motion carries.
I don't know the file number, they'll try to get the necessary equipment in place, have everything ready to do it. It will force it enough to get to that level.
Question on that, when people keep asking me about that riser. To cut that riser off, how much more that increase the flow?
Almost, almost fourfold.
Almost fourfold.
It's gonna make a huge difference in our project.
To get that.
Again, as we've discussed, if we get monsoon, typhoon, you know, the big one coming in, it will not, or hit that lake when it coming up. But it will, it will, in fact, go into action quicker, you know, to keep it from getting up as fast as it did. We lost eight and a half feet in that lake in about three days when we got that last one. That's how quickly the lake came down and we've not recovered from that.
Have we yet determined if the lake is drained and if the road is still safe? I mean, are we replacing the dam or talking about replacing the dam because we want to put a lake back there? Or we replacing the dam because it is an unsafe road?
That's not yet the one we're talking about.
Okay.
But this is, and I'm glad you brought that up. This is actually where a lot of people are getting confused. This past summer, we had the water down to, you could walk out on the bottom of the lake. We were still not in compliance because DEQ didn't say fix the water. DEQ said fix the dam. So regardless to whether you've got water in the lake or not, DEQ said fix the dam. The dam is what's unsafe. Now, the dam is more unsafe when the water level is up, but the dam is still unsafe, period. And that's with vehicles going across the dam, with school buses going across the dam. Remember, the south end of that dam slipped right up into the travel lane while the water was down. So DEQ didn't tell us, a lot of people thinking, well, we wanna go out there and spend a lot of money on that lake. Well, in the eyes of the state of Mississippi, the lake and the dam are two different things. The lake is a responsibility of the school board. The dam is a responsibility of October County. So regardless to whether people are saying, go out there and take all of the water out of the lake, you're still not in compliance because DEQ said fix the dam. The second thing is, and you just alluded to it, even when you cut this riser off and we have a monsoon like we did last, last week, the dam is right back unsafe again. And it doesn't take, just because the water goes down faster, it doesn't take the five minutes of unsafety for that dam to go. So you're still talking, I mean, you're still trying to get around the actual issue of fixing the dam and there's nowhere around that.
To that point right there, to fix the dam, I know we keep talking about the levee, the dam, the riser. And I know you're working on that. But to cut that riser off, to get like Supervisor Miller saying, and the question's still out there, can you keep that lake down? Is it, is it safe to keep the lake down with the riser like that? And to his point, talking about the dam, if we did redo the dam and the bridge that went over it, can you get an estimate for it?
All due respect to this board and our last board leader, these are questions that you have. And I told this board I needed to do some work to answer those questions. And I wasn't authorized to do that. But elaborate a little further. If there's gonna be a lake, we have to fix the dam. If there's not gonna be a lake, then there's a whole nother set of circumstances. Some of which will be involved with the dam and the road. But there will be cost and circumstances in not having a lake. In that we would have to likely do some, set smaller lakes upstream, which might require us to have to purchase land, some check downs. It is not as simple as just saying we're not gonna have a lake anymore. Because I've still got eighteen square miles of water trying to go somewhere that people are not experiencing that. And again, I just, these are questions, it's gonna take some engineering, it's gonna take some time, it's gonna take some time with M D E Q. And I know there's answers that you want and these are answers that they're gonna have at the public hearing. We're not there yet.
Good deal.
Again, since we got to that point, why don't we go ahead and authorize our county engineer to move forward with a set of plans so we can get these questions answered? So we can, so we can make a decision on the lake. We can't, we keep asking questions and he keep trying to tell you what he can, but he's trying to tell you, until he can get in and get detailed, he can't get you the answers that you're looking for. And he can't get you the answers until we authorize him.
And on that same light, some of you, I had mentioned a meeting with the core engineers. That meeting is now scheduled for March the second. It won't be held before the meeting. That's because M D E Q wanted to be involved in the meeting. Waylon and Kurtcher wanted to be present in the meeting because he's researched this family and before my involvement with it. So, you know, there's gonna be some input at that time. But at some point, you know, we gotta answer some questions.
Well, until we have that meeting, in my opinion, we need to wait for the core.
He will go with this way.
What we just do.
To add into this, the Secretary of State's office is looking into this. They haven't given me an answer as to what their position is gonna be on this. One of the things that I have asked them to do, regardless of what direction we go into in fixing this, whatever lease amount or whatever amount that comes off of this, this property of food here, whether it's a lake or not, for us to be able to use some of that money until this bond or whatever we do to help pay for what we're trying to accomplish here. They're trying to figure out what their best scenario for this is. Now, for argument's sake, one thing that I did tell them is that dirt sitting out there with a lake, without a lake in it, is not gonna get the kind of money that they're leasing it for currently. And that has made them look at this differently than what they may have looked at it in the past. In other words, the lease on this thing is approximately forty thousand dollars a year. If there's no lake, there's no forty thousand dollars a year. And I realize that's peanuts compared to what we're may end up having to spend on this. But in partnering with what we're trying to accomplish here, I think they need to come to the table because they do look at this exactly the way our engineers telling us. There's water and there's the dam. And they think the dam and the road belong to us, they think the water belongs to them. And my statement back to them is, without a dam, you have no water. There's, there needs to be something that helps us put this together. And so they are looking at this, I don't wanna tell you what their decision will be, but I think they're gonna help, there's gonna be a favorable, favorable alternative coming to the table and helping this board at some point. We just don't have that answer yet. These are questions that they're having to come to. And frankly, in all fairness to them, no one's ever asked them to do this before. So we're kinda asking them to do something that, that we haven't asked before.
On the same light, Waylon was telling too. I shared with John, Supervisor, Jim Ellis approached me today. They do a super talk show on Thursday, kind of what's happening around the Old Triangle type thing. How about an interview with me, I understand. And I need the board's direction on whether you wanna do that or not. It might disseminate some information before the twenty-fourth. It might muddy the water. I want, you know, there's nothing that we're gonna share in a interview that hasn't been shared in the board. But I need a little direction on whether you'd like that to happen or not.
The more I think about it, in my opinion, I think it should be, you should have that interview in that way. Enlighten the public in every way that you possibly can.
Strictly that's a flow to the board.
Well, I think, I think one thing it'll do is it'll actually give people some more information and have more pertinent questions to ask during the public hearing, you know, rather than just coming in cold and trying to figure out what they need to ask.
I'm good with you. You need a, you don't need a board order?
No, I just need, I wanna do that, contact my supervisor and tell him I'm not. Last thing, a little bit better subject. I have plans and contract documents ready to advertise for repair on the slide at the jail. I need permission from the board to advertise.
Need a motion, a second. Motion by Supervisor Miller, second by Supervisor Trainer. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you. I'll just send the core to someone else.
Uh. Did y'all repeat that last one? That was the order to do the, to repair the slide at jail.
Order to advertise for repairs on the slide at the County Jail.
Miller and Trainer.
Where are we on the stop lines? The stop lines?
Just starting design now. You have them all. You've got two board orders and the contracts. Again, I know it's a lot of signatures to do, but if they're done, I'll take them. If not, I'll just get them all.
You're good, anything else?
I'm only good one thing Supervisor Howard said. There's a lot of folks that have been working really hard. And we're trying to give you the best information we can. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, insurance analysis, Mr. Bowen?
While Mr. Bowen is coming, I asked him to come speak to the board. I was made aware of his services, so I called him up and I met with him and he talked to me about some of the things that he offered. I asked him if he would come and talk to the board about the things he do this. As you all know, we are continuing looking for funding sources to try and make those repairs out of County Lake. And so he's gonna review our insurance policy at no charge and then report back to us. And if he feel like he can help us, then he'll come back and approach the board and let us know what he's found. And then we'll discuss the cost of the services. But with that said, thank you so much for coming.
Well, thank you all for allowing me to be here tonight. I, I've been in the industry on the insurance side and the construction side for thirty-eight years or so. And I'll tell you, oftentimes, you know, we have insurance policies and even though we read them, most people don't read into them. And you have to read into an insurance policy and truly understand the boundaries of the coverage. In your case, let's use the dam for example. Most people think that if that dam broke, it's when your insurance policy would kick in. But the floodwaters also cause damage that's not seen by the average layperson because they assume that if it's not broke, okay, yeah, we're okay. But just say the flood was at one mark and you're, now you've got to increase that's additional waters flooding water that may have caused additional pressure on the dam that it was not designed for. Well, it causes damage. That damage typically will be covered in some shape or fashion. And so what happens is, when we dig into it as your county engineers doing surveying all your issues, what I'd like to know is, or what you should know is, okay, yeah, we've got a dam that we've been dealing with for four years, but where did the problem come from? It didn't just show up now, I promise you it didn't. No dam that you build, it's just not gonna pop up in its back, done work that way. Something caused that. Well, insurance is the coverage of cause. Something caused it, then guess what, I should have some coverage, should, I'm not sure if we do or not. But I think that when you look into this, you look into where the damages come from, what caused all this? Because if it is something that was caused by flooding or it's caused by movement or caused by something, then you may have an opportunity to, you know, to gain some, you know, some finances to fix those problems. Now, the thing I do think you have to be very concerned about, and your attorney will tell you, that oftentimes insurance say, oh, okay, now you're asking for, just throw a number out, you're asking for ten million dollars. Okay, let's do some history on this dam. They go back three years, four years, six years and they say, hey, you had some problems back here on this dam six years ago that we heard about. And now I hear y'all have those problems again and four years later, I mean, two years later. And now today you're telling me that the dam is gonna break and how is our problem? And that's where you have to work in conjunction with someone who understands policies, someone who understands the law, someone who understands engineering and design to help you determine what got us to this point and whose responsibility. If it was a natural problem, then you're covered. You have, you have, I'll give you an example, I won't hold you long, but give you a quick example. So you have policy and coverage for, which is a special flood hazard area, that's your normal area. But you also, and that's about ten million dollars, but you also have coverage for those things that are non-flood hazard areas. That's a hundred and twenty-five million dollars of coverage. On top of that, what you have is interruption by civil authority. That could be done, that could be looked at in a. That could be done, that, that could be looked at in a lot of ways because now all of a sudden we've shut this dam down because we have a potential act. That's a civil act. And so when we start looking at your coverages, you find out that maybe I do have something here. The other part about it is that if you have engineers involved, you also, your policy also pays for them. So, what happens is you have a situation where if the damage is found, if there is something there that you can file on your claim, that's basically no money is out, out of the, uh, the county's pocket, which helps you now fill some gaps that are potentially there, that, that, you know, that financially that, that may be there to deal, address some of your issues. And so I just, you know, again, um, Supervisor Howard called us and then, you know, sir, I would, anyway, I can help you, I help you. I've, I've been all over the world doing this. I've been all over Africa and Puerto Rico and Virgin Islands when behind, you know, every kind of hurricane and God knows what else. And it's a, what you don't want is that dam to break. I'm just telling you. You, you, you don't want that. But that's a major fallout and the dam is just a small part of it.
Can you give us your first name?
Yes, I'm sorry.
You've been in the industry, but are you an attorney or?
No, no, no.
I mean, there's no, I don't have anything on my pack about you.
Okay, I apologize. My name is Warren Bowen.
Okay. And where are you from?
I'm from Jackson, Mississippi.
Okay.
I do have some cards. Is this okay?
That's fine. Yeah, absolutely.
It's okay. I'll pass this out.
And you're in the insurance business?
I am. I, I'm a licensed insurance suggestion.
Okay.
Um, I, um, and I, I've worked on it. I've worked on the insurance side for some years. But now, just an advocate, just wanna help out. You know, I asked you to hire me. I didn't. I just wanna help you out. That's all, you know, I mean, we've got some, it just need to be looked at. I mean, it's all over the news and Supervisor Howard called us, sir, if I come down and help any way I can. So, uh, and I also have, um, some background from disasters. And, uh, uh, and so I know and I understand that you, you, you've gotta be proactive. But oftentimes, once a declaration is done, insurance companies really try to step back as much, most they can, the best that they can. But you wanna make sure you keep them engaged, um, in the coverage. Make sure they're covered. That's a basis. I just wanna basically just cover that with you all. Hopefully you all give me the okay to just dig into it, ask a few questions. And, uh, I also wanna understand what constitutes damage on the dam. Not because the dam broke, but what got me to that point. Something caused it. And it didn't just pop up. It just, it doesn't work that way. It doesn't, it just don't pop up. Something caused it. Your roof don't come off your house because it just came off. Something caused that roof to come off. And we wanna find out, I'd like you all at least consider what caused the damage. And if it is, is it something that you covered by? And if you are, it works out for you. If it doesn't, you know, don't harm nobody. Nobody spent the money, nobody did anything, but at least you know.
Yes, sir. I'm curious, and I'm actually fascinated with, with what you're saying. But even if our policy specifically excludes something, you're saying because of their, the cause itself, there may be coverage?
Yeah. And, and, and in the, in the, in the insurance industry, we call them perils. You know, what, what, I mean, what was the event? What was the thing that happened that caused that dam to be weaker than where it was originally put in to be? And you think about it. If it was just natural, why is it not the whole dam bad? Why is it just one section? What caused it? And that's something simple. You have engineers on staff. You have, you have everything you need here where you do not have to spend money. You oughta at least know it. I mean, you oughta just know it. And if it works out, guess what? You call them up. You don't spend money. They deduct you, whatever your deductive is, that's deducted out of the claim. And you get your money's dollar on the issues, professional fees and all, you know. And so, I mean.
And how does that work? When you're self-insured?
Well, you know, self-insured, you know, people say it all the time. You know, it's talking about self-insured. Self-insured is a good thing because what it does is it stops the industry from taking your claim and running it through the roof. See, typically, if I got a house and I'm insured by State Farm, and all of a sudden a house gets something, something major happens, and I call it in. Well, at some point, where's State Farm gonna want? They don't want their money back. Whether you revenue after or not, they getting their money back at some point from the neighbors and whoever else is involved with that coverage in that area. So, in self-insured policies, you have some control as the owners of this policy. Uh, but be, but, but please understand that a self-insured policy is also insured. This policy is a billion dollars. The Golden Triangle typically won't have a billion dollars sitting over here for somebody I just called. So, that policy is insured by somebody to give them coverage on it. And so oftentimes, you can't take this self-insured. I haven't said, man, if we do it, we're gonna pay it out of pockets. And that's not how it works. It doesn't. It works, it says, okay, um, we paid for a crew. Our own special coverage is insured by somebody over here, Lords of London, uh, AFNM. Some of the big boys are insuring that billion dollar policy. They're not gonna insure you. It's not to all states in State Farm. No, it's, it, it, it goes to Lords of London. It goes to some of the big guys. And so that policy and your self-insured policy says that we, as the owners, we have some say so. With Lords of London, you don't have a say so unless you know how to have a say so. Now, that ballot is fought differently because they don't wanna pay the claim star. And so that's the good part about it. So, you did a great thing in having a self-insured policy. But always understand that a billion dollar coverage, uh, you know, ten counties didn't get together and put together a billion dollars of money. There's somebody backing it. And that's when you get to the, to the heavy hitters. Um, and so in general, it'd be just like I'm gonna write a claim if there is a claim that's for you. And I just really encourage you to just look into it because, I mean, you know, we, we just don't have it. I wish I stayed there. You know, Jackson, in Jackson, we wouldn't be flooding now. We, we got water literally everywhere. Having to weed, to figure out a way to get out of the city, which I'm saying, we're alone. Trying to stay there, you know. Uh, and so I, I just encourage you to please look at it. Oh, yes, sir.
Mr. Bowen, thank you so much for coming, uh, to speak with the board. Uh, at this point, he has said that he would be willing to look over our policy at no cost.
No cost.
And if he thinks that he can help us, he will come back and report to us and we can talk about, uh, the cost of his services at that point, so.
And, and, and Supervisor, Supervisor Howard, I wanna say this, please. If I find, if we find that you guys have something that you can file, you don't have to hire me. I'm fine with that. But I don't want you to have some backing and don't use it. That's not good. It's just not a good situation. If you've got some backing and I can find it for you and I say, okay, here it is. This is how you file it, and your attorney might decide to do it. Guess what? At least we won. And that's how I see it. And so, um, but if you need my help, I'll help you. If you don't, at least you know, and you can move forward yourself, you know.
Well, at this point, I wanna make a motion for the board to authorize him to move forward at reviewing our policy and report back to us. Uh, and we can go from there.
Motion second. Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion over that? If not, all those in favor? Motion carries five o. Take a look at it.
It's okay, Mr. Bowen. Did you, everybody have a, everybody got a card or not?
Yes, sir.
What do you got?
All right. Thanks, Senator.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much.
Chancellor Clerk Business, uh, Ms. Livingston?
The only thing I have is, um, I need to get a board order for Rob to help. I have a, I'm appointed a conservatorship in a chancery court matter and I need him to help file a petition, but I'll need a board order for him to.
So, you need a board order to authorize?
Rob to do some chancery clerk matter.
All right, with the chancery clerk matter. All right. Need a motion and a second on that. Motion by Supervisor Trainer, second by Supervisor Howard. All those in favor? Motion carries five o.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. County Business Administration, Ms. Enner?
Motion for approval.
All right, same in your package. Got motion by Supervisor Williams, second by Supervisor Howard. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor? Motion carries five o.
I wanted to ask about, real quick, about when he went to Lewisville, um, that one. Did the county send him down there? On that one that's, uh, till two o'clock in the morning, says he, let's see.
Two o'clock in the morning?
Wait, hold on just a second. Went to Lewisville, picked up P V C pipe, gone one seventeen. Went to the rentals. Robert worked until two A M. Is that something the county?
He, 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 he went to Lewisville at two A M., but he was up on the labor working until two A M. that morning. Helped him set up everything.
That was when I was setting the pump. And, and didn't cipher and hold his gun.
Is that the day that we got those?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, one fourteen, he's got one fourteen.
We voted on that invoice last time.
We, we, we voted, we voted to pay him, but this is the actual invoice that he was.
He did some, he got P C pipe and everything before we actually got them. And when they had to go, then we went, got them. They delivered them. There was a lot of people out there working throughout and finding different pumps going.
Yeah.
I don't know that he went to Lewisville on, on.
No, he, he didn't go to Lewisville at two A M.
I think.
He worked, he worked, yeah.
I think Mr. Williams, Robert Martin, was at Lewisville.
Well, say it again. I don't understand that statement. Excuse me. Excuse me.
Yeah, county employee, he went down there and gave, picked up the, uh, the Lewisville.
Any more discussion on that? I mean, I, I was pretty upfront with him and I told him I appreciated everything he did. And that's why I'm gonna vote no, because I did last time.
John, that man is out there at, 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 when it's down at twenty-one degrees every morning at seven o'clock, breaking down the pump, changing or fueling a restart, pumping. We paying him twenty-five dollars an hour. You know what the company said? That they wanted to man the pump. Ninety dollars an hour.
I get that, but we got, we've got county employees that have been out there. Guys that have been in my district or in my area, they've been over there.
We paying them. We paying them. Right.
But.
I'd rather pay twenty-five dollars an hour than ninety dollars an hour.
And the fire coordinator, you know, as well, is out there the whole time, you know.
Correct.
Helping with that. I, I thought that we needed to pay forward, not backwards myself.
All right. So, you need a motion and a second to do that?
I think we did already. We got a motion.
All right, all those in.
I have a second.
I have my second.
Okay. So, you motion, he's second. Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries three two.
I, I do have a question. When was this one? I know, um, we had the lowest bid, but when was that, when was that bid received? We don't have a, okay, don't have a stamp on that one.
What's wrong?
About when it was received?
All bids, which bid?
Helena.
Helena? I got it.
It was received between two, five, five.
That's when you type it out, but they have no stamp on it.
No, it was received on two five and two seven. It was received and I walked out of the office for three days. It was on my desk and I hang up it on my machine and it was received in hours.
I just noticed there wasn't, wasn't a stamp with, uh, county.
I hung up the office on the tenth and it was on my desk.
I make a motion.
All right. Motion by Supervisor Miller, second by Supervisor Trainer to take Helena Chemical. All those, any more discussion? All right. All those, uh, motion four? All those in favor? Five o. All right.
N F one trans five. I put on your, in your packet, uh, request to do an N F one trans five. Um, I have a special escrow, and this is two thousand eleven road fund fund of fifty thousand short fall and available revenue for the March twenty-two debt service payment.
Okay.
And then also, uh, I need to also transfer fifty thousand on special escrow into funds O nine seven for nine one salaries for short fall and available nine one fees to cover wages.
You need to do those separate or as one?
We can do it as one. We can do it as separate.
Do you want to do it separate?
I just want approval on the first one, special escrow. Well, both of them is on the same, on the same sheet, right? Yeah, okay. Well, we can do them together then.
Yeah, I had to put that one for one from nine one one on the sheet because I didn't realize they were short on money till today.
I'm motion for approval, uh, special escrow fund zero zero two, not zero zero two.
Yeah, that's special escrow fund.
Is that for both of them though, or is that just the nine one one?
That's for one.
That's one.
All right. So, that's the nine one one. We got a motion by Supervisor Williams on that.
That's what I had to hand.
I got you. O nine seven. Okay. All right. So, for the short fall in the nine one one salaries, motion by Supervisor Williams, second by Supervisor Trainer. All right. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion five o. Now, we need to do the, uh, the two thousand eleven road fund, which will be number one eighty. And that would send that, uh, to special escrow?
One special escrow.
From special escrow?
One eighty.
For the twenty twenty. Okay. So, I need a motion and a second on that. Motion by Supervisor Trainer, second by Supervisor Miller. Uh, any discussion on that? If not, all those in favor? Motion carries five o. All right.
I have two budget amendments for the sheriff department for, um, revenue for, um, insurance proceeds from targeted, um, fatal damage and public safety grant O six.
Need a motion and a second for the budget amendments. Motion by Supervisor Howard.
It's on both of them, yes.
Yeah, second by Supervisor Williams. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries.
I had a couple of other things I need to run it up.
Okay.
We received, um, fire truck, fire pump truck for animal sturgis this morning. I know one of those accepting the twenty twenty fire line or pumper and I only served the serial number in the board on the vote.
I make a motion. It's nice.
Yeah, motion by.
It's automatic. It's diesel.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Yeah, discussion. Ms., Ms. Garrett, do you know where that one is going?
That was going to sturgis and we got one on order for May. That should be in soon.
All right. So, Miller and second by Supervisor Williams. Uh, all those in favor to accept this fire pumper to sturgis? Motion carries you now.
Next thing, on the five four mag and training officer salary, when you find a five four mag, we said we were going to put it on as independent contractors, but it's been brought to my kitchen since he and also our training officer have our fire full-time first positions elsewhere. Well, we need to go on April for their, um, pay amounts and we have to pay first on it. So, I need a order allowing that.
Uh, while, while we, while we write that up, we agreed to, to up the fire coordinator's salary to a thousand dollars per month from six hundred. In the past, the training officer's salary has always been one hundred dollars less than what the fire coordinator's salary is. So, I feel like if we're gonna up the fire coordinator, we should, we should continue with that trend and be a hundred dollars less than what the fire coordinator is making.
I got that problem.
So, I'm gonna motion, yeah, I motion that we move our training officer's salary up to nine hundred dollars.
From six hundred to nine hundred.
No, he's five hundred.
Five hundred. He's five hundred to nine hundred.
That's right, because he was six.
Right.
He was six.
It's always just been a hundred dollars less than the fire coordinator. It's always just been a hundred dollars less than the fire coordinator.
Any discussion on that? Got a motion by Supervisor Howard, second by Supervisor Williams? Any more discussion on that, guys?
I have motion in second on the piles. Okay.
Did we do the first?
Somebody added to my request.
Oh yeah, alright, so that was all in one thing, correct?
Yes, okay.
Did we afford?
Okay, so, all those in favor? All those in favor, or any discussion, okay. Any opposed? Four to one.
And the last thing I have is, well, house camp printout that we've given to all the guys that work in the back end, so we can add later a house camp.
And what number's in what side?
The house camp sheet?
Yeah.
A waiver, but it's written on supervisors to check specifically, we need those back. Because we're gonna try to get bill for additional house count, that's more, and we're gonna make us. And Mister, well, um. Rudy said that if y'all don't have time to do it, that we will go add the contract with the supervisors and let they go around and look at it.
I went around and looked at most of mine, I didn't get to every single one of them, but.
I got yours, Dean, we got yours.
How much did you say his contract was?
He said that he wasn't gouged.
He needs some a little bit more than that.
What are we, we were already satisfied.
My gouge and his gouge might be two different things.
But now. All that we did was start billing, we have the addresses of the ones we've identified, the ones that we have not been dealing.
Y'all identify those, printouts, and we need to, y'all to identify whether the residence is still there, is it gone? If it was a mobile home, livable, if anybody lives in it or not living in it. We picked up, uh, we're running that seven thousand eight hundred and four customers that we're billing, and I think how much they gonna pick, bill us for, ninety-two, ninety-five?
I think so, might be about nine to six hundred.
I'm still short one.
So. We're talking about this. Um. So, so there's still, we still don't with the house count, we still aren't matching up with him.
Can you tell us whose, can you email us and tell us whose districts are the biggest discrepancies?
The one that got the biggest picture, the pound pictures.
The what?
One that got the biggest pile of pictures. Thanks.
Yours?
I mean, how can.
I mean, what I'm asking is by district, can you tell us the discrepancy of the numbers?
No, I can't.
You know, like.
I had six hundred, or about six hundred, uh, four hundred, I think. It was all.
Nothing, it was trying to add over the thousand. And, um, I want many more of them.
How can we get, with the number that they're billing us? Versus the number that we've got, that we collect for? How we ever go, how can we ever match that up, no words? That is the quandary of it all.
Can you check with Rudy and see what he, uh, can he give us a quote, is him?
Yes, for what we made again. It's been too long.
Yeah, quote, like, like her, her address, her.
But who's that man who say gonna get in the business, and still gonna ride down the road, and they're gonna quickly check.
We haven't. Never made it.
Ninety-two, seven, seven. We anticipating having.
We have a meeting next month.
Yeah.
I'm hoping that we pick up ninety-two, that we pick up the rest of them.
Okay, so we know what we, we're trying to find the one.
Yeah, I'm trying to find about seven.
Okay.
So if we, for instance, we had one that, like this week, I found out that we were getting billed for two addresses and it was only one. We figured that out at the P D D. How are we gonna update that list down at Golden Tram and let them know to stop sending us? The, the two bills that we've been getting, now it's just one.
How do you know they're billing us for two addresses?
Cause the billing department, I was talking to Jennifer, we're, we're getting billed for.
No, are we billing our customer for two addresses?
We were, but I'm saying. It was only one address. It was in error there, because it was a, a house and a trailer. Anyway, they were living in a house, the house, they had to redo the house, moved into a trailer right there. The trailer of the house is unlivable while they were remodeling it. Now they got the trailer, it's on, anyway. It was assumed as two addresses or two bills. It was only one bill.
That's where we were billing our customer for garbage pickup, not where the place I be under, not where they were billing us for garbage pickup.
Alright, but how do, obviously, if their number's higher than our number?
Uh-uh.
By eighteen hundred, okay? Then they're billing us for two addresses as well. They gotta be. How, how do we clear that up between our billing department?
Well.
And their department that deals with us?
Cause they, they're not connected. I mean, those people, what they're doing is they're giving us the numbers for the garbage cans that they're going out and emptying. This place down here is billing for the customers that they supposedly think live in a house somewhere. Those two people don't talk. And so basically, what it will require is for us to go back and get the plumbers. Organization to give us a better house count by Romans than what we got.
So, so can you just get Rudy to give us a quote? And if it's, if it's a reasonable quote, let him go out and do a count and get us a number and compare it to the number that they gave us, and if, if it differs, then we need to have a discussion on, on. Who's right, who's wrong. I think, listen, they've always said that if we bring them a number. Then we can discuss our number against their number, but we keep not bringing them a number. That's what the problem coming in on our end.
Yes.
Not on their end.
Yes.
So if Rudy can give us a quote on what he will go out and count residents. And, and I guess is reasonable, then we can, we can at least start that.
See if they'll do that.
I would say just go ahead and authorize them to do it. I mean, don't even give a quote, we gotta get it done at this point. We have plenty of time.
The quicker we get it, the more, the quicker we.
What other option do we have? I mean, if we don't like.
We, we don't really have another option, but yeah, we started talking about this, a middle part of last year.
So.
Well, I got mine filled out, but I'm just saying, it's still difficult on our end.
That would be, I'd, I'd like to make a motion if you authorize P D D to do a house count survey forward.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Miller. Uh, any more discussion on that? If not, all those papers. Motion carries. I know, yeah, I mean, that would clear it all up, for sure. Anything else? Uh, Trainer Miller. Okay. Uh. Any business from yours Orlando?
Uh, I guess just one and two, under, under these supervisors' situation here.
I got.
I'm assuming this, this person would probably be you, but I don't know if they need a board action, but just, are you aware of this workforce development?
I, I am. So that would put me as the appointee?
Right, that would be my suggestion, cause she's the latest official.
Alright, no, that's fine.
No, he doesn't require a whole lot of that.
I was gonna say, what, what, uh.
At I C C, up at, uh, the I C C Center in two blocks.
Okay.
They meet, I think, more than four or maybe.
Okay, okay, yeah, that'll be fine. Uh.
And then second.
Give me that information to.
Okay.
Get on plan, we can get together. Okay.
Okay.
I made a motion. Uh, motion by Trainer, second by Miller, all in favor? Motion carries. East October Hall County Wastewater District Appointment.
We have a, a letter, uh, directions in our package, and I'd just like to make the motion, and we follow the letter, I think it's appointing Mister Will Sanders to replace Mister Kenny Sykes. Is that what that letter said?
Uh, yes, Will Sanders. So we'd be putting Mister Will Sanders on the East October Hall County Wastewater, uh, District, and we'll make that motion, uh.
Motion by Supervisor Trainer, second by Williams, all in favor? Motion carries.
There'll be another recommendation coming soon, and it just lost its appointee, didn't feel like, past week, burgos on you, on should it be someone to replace him.
Anything else?
That's it.
From you, Supervisor Miller?
Nothing from me? Uh, yeah, just, just quickly, sort of backing up to the garbage, uh, that was, that was a call from a constituent, actually, I think it's in your district.
Yeah, that's true.
Uh, and, and he finally made his way around the call to me, but I, I told him we'd try to get him an answer. This is the situation. It was the Star Wars Raccoon Hunting Club, Maven, Maven Raccoon Hunting Club. Uh, they got a bill for seven hundred and something dollars.
Seven twenty-eight.
Seven hundred twenty-eight dollars. They, they had never had a garbage can, they had never received a bill, and then they got this, got, got this bill for, for the garbage. John and I talked a little bit this week about, do we need to look at any special situations for something like this, or is it, is it, is it what it is?
They were, a bill was being sent out to residents back in two thousand and eleven, twelve, whenever we did, um, readdressing the last time. All the new addresses that were picked up at that point, they sent them to resident and not necessarily knowing who lived there. So a bill had been going out for all this time, but it was addressed to resident for that.
Someone in that, in that club.
Executive of.
It wa, it was, it was mailed to the address of the club. So whatever that road address is, is what it was mailed to.
They probably got P O box or one of them. They would never.
I know it's, it's a club that sits out in the middle of nowhere, uh.
And but it has a.
And they whole hunt.
Address, and they mailed it to no one on address.
So I guess if, if we can go down to P D D and they can give us the information showing who they've been sending this bill, then.
I mean, things like that should be cleared up with calls. Have y'all been getting any calls like that?
They didn't have a name, and they were recently, like, put on the bill, and when they got the name, maybe we went back and, and started billing owners. We went back and they found their address.
So you've been billing them?
At their address.
Since when?
Since seven hundred dollars worth that, I don't know, sixty dollars a year.
Oh, okay, I thought maybe they just started back billing sometime.
Yeah, that was being going to residents at the street address. When we went through and started finding the owners of all the property, billing them, they went, I guess, to P O box or something.
Yeah, and he called me, and I called the billing department, and. I don't know the department, I didn't, they never told me the record of the bills that they sent out, but, um.
Okay, so I, I have a question, um, similar. So you've got somebody that has rental property, and they've had a big dumpster, whether it be a trailer park, you know, I'm talking about Supervisor Williams, that they've always had there. Or a group of houses, they don't want trash cans.
They don't have to have trash cans, but.
They're already paying them, they're paying for the dumpsters.
I realize that, but they're supposed to pay them. If they want the trash dumpster instead of trash cans, they need to pay for the.
I know one of them's doing that, but I know the trailer park at the end of. South Montgomery.
So they're supposed.
On the right. You'll need to address him about that, okay?
This house to house.
Doctor Anthony.
To, what Supervisor Howard was talking about, like, the P D D and, and how far back they've been billing people, I mean, is there a statute of limitations for how, how far back? We can go?
No. This, my, this is not, you're not need, I can offer books for the counties. And it goes with the property, and it don't matter if it was not property sales. It's my understanding.
So it can go to the next landowner, even if, say Chad bought some land from me, whatever.
Yes.
And then five years later.
Yes.
There was water bill, whatever, then he'd be.
Garbage bill, I don't know, water, my back to do this, but it does go, I give garbage.
So it'd be just like a lien on a property, I guess.
So I like to call them.
I don't, I don't know if we can, cause. Y'all, this is a slippery slope, and now I'm, my theory on this is, if you're gonna look at this, come up with a reasonable. Thing that includes everybody and, and we do it that way, but once you go down this road. It, it's, I mean, you're gonna have more and more people who wanna be included in this, and, and for valid reasons, I'm not gonna even suggest that they're not valid reasons. It's awfully hard for me to tell my, I'll use my dad for this example. It's awful hard for me to, my dad, to tell, look, I know you don't live there, but you got electricity back in the back of your cab, and you gonna pay for garbage? It, it's a hard thing to make people understand, especially people like my dad. So, so I say that with, with as much respect as I can to anybody that has this out there, but we can come up with a reasonable thing, if that's what y'all wanna do. But my suggestion would be, we shouldn't do it.
Well, no, 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 we're just trying to, I mean.
It's, it's a hard.
We're trying to see how far back can you go with anybody? I mean, I'm asking this generically.
Yeah, I think, and I agree with you, I, there, there are weird dynamics here.
Death cancels it. Death cancels.
Death.
So let me ask this, do, do you, do you.
On that person, what's the status with the property?
So, do you, do you hold everybody's tag that was a member of that club, or do you hold the president's of the club's tag?
At this point, nobody's tag was tagged, because I didn't have anybody that's tagged was registered to that place. Cause it was camp names. So nobody's tag was tagged.
But somebody's gotta be here responsible for paying the bill.
Whoever the owner is that the bill is now going to is responsible for paying the bill.
I don't know who owns that club.
I don't know who owns it, but I know some of the members have died, and I don't know, I ain't gonna say part of the money.
Well, seven hundred, seven hundred and forty-five years, we've been billing for about five years.
So they have started paying the new bill, right?
Well, no, they call John and go say it's.
They ain't paid nothing.
Tell them you start paying, paying for January.
Oh, man. Alright.
Hey, we'll kick seven hundred down the road.
Anything else about?
Yeah, I, 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 I think that we should develop some reasonable guidelines that we can live with, that we can live with. And give Turner Robinson the opportunity to look at it from a legal point, and then, um. Look at the guidelines that we presently have, we're going trying to waste management, and see if you can come up with something that we can live with as a reasonable guideline, and who's exempt, who's exempt.
Okay. I have a few issues real quick.
Alright.
Y'all, you remember about a year ago, approximately, M S U came with a idea to have bus services out there? Well, the proverbial, it's time to pay the piper or violin player, whoever, there's, we're supposed to be paying them fifty thousand dollars as part of their, our portion of doing that. Well, here's the kicker, we can't legally pay them to do this, it's, it's, it was, at this point, it's considered a donation.
I got you.
And so I've got to, I'm getting with, I'm gonna talk with the auditor's office, and, and assuming this is what y'all want me to do. I'm gonna talk with the auditor's office and find out. How do we need to proceed with this? Is there some kind of, of exception to this? Um, and I don't even know that y'all completely understood that there, and so this is, I'm trying to get some clarity here, that we were gonna be paying fifty thousand dollars a year. I, I don't know that that was completely.
That was for the special needs.
Right, special needs, and I think they're picking up whomever is needed, cause it's kinda hard to, to determine who, who the special needs folks are sometimes. So I think that they're, they're, and they are providing this service, in fairness to them, they contacted me a couple of times, and I should've checked into this center, but I've just been snowed under with other things. With your permission, I'm gonna try to find out how we need to proceed with this, if there's an inter-local agreement we need to do, or if there's some kind of legislation that we, from a local and private standpoint, we need. Uh, with your permission, I'm gonna try to find out how we need to proceed with this, if there's an inter-local agreement we need to do, or if there's some kind of legislation that we, from a local and private standpoint, we need to do. So I'll look into that with, with this board's permission.
Need a board order for that, for us?
And I, I need a board order asking me to, to do that.
Trainer, Miller, motion second, all in favor, motion carries.
The second thing is, um, earlier tonight, there was a, a couple of people that talked to us, uh, and I don't want this to sneak up on us again, and y'all be put in a situation where you're looking at me to give you a decision on this. But, uh, we've been asked to deal with some cutting of brass and things like that at our school district. And this is coming, they, they've come tonight, and they'll probably be coming for the next few board meetings, and I need some, some instruction from y'all. If, and keep this in mind, I need a unanimous board order if you wanna do this. So if it's not unanimous-
A unanimous board order too.
To, to look at a local and private to allow us to do cutting. If y'all were a municipality, to let you know this, if y'all were a municipality, y'all could go do it. You could do this without a board order, without a local and private, without anything. But because you're accounting and, and you're, you're, you're not a municipality, you can't go and do work on a school, unless it's gravel. I mean, we, we, we fixed roads and things like that for years, but y'all can't go and cut grass or, or things like that to, to make upkeep on this, because you're not a municipality, and it doesn't make sense to me.
That would require, that would be some liability issues too, what if someone gets hurt, what if we bust a window?
There's all sorts of dynamics that are at work and play with that. I'm not, I'm not encouraging you to do it, I'm telling you that I need some instructions.
Can I ask two things? One, do they have to, like a group, does it have to be registered with the Secretary of State's office as an official group that they're asking for something? And then the second thing I would ask is, uh, the auditor just released a report about, you know, who you can give funds and who you can't give funds to, and even this would be a donation of services, so we would be, I don't know that this is even a group that we can do anything for?
You're a hundred percent correct. Um, the, the reality is, is there certain groups that you can do things for, certain groups you can't do things for. The only reason that, that you might be able to do something for this is that you would not necessarily be doing it for, you know, I guess you would be, but it, it's school property. And because it's school property, there is the potential to be able to do something for the school. That being said, it's not the school that's asking you to do it, it's these groups that are asking you to do it.
Well, here's, here's the rub there is, in other words, every year, and you can see it on your tax printout, is there's certain money levied for the schools. Certain money levied for your county.
We had a gentleman here asking about that, as a matter of fact.
And so, if that money has been levied for county services, that's, it's illegal to, you know what I mean? To take that money and dedicate it to another-
You're correct.
Just what I'm saying, that, that's just-
I just wanna put y'all in a position to be able to answer these people and not be in a position to every time they come, that they just keep coming and asking you. I wanna be in a position-
I think it was last year that we did, that we were in this boardroom right here. Last year, we did it under, did it interlocal for that specific time, if I'm correct. And the assumption was that after we did this, that the school district would up, would keep up their property.
We never, we never did it up.
It never, it never occurred. And that's one of the reasons they're coming back now, is that, that, that what, what was done here was never accomplished there. Um, that, that fair to say?
That's fair to say. Uh, I have, I think, I would like to see us do it, and if we're ready for a motion, I'd make a motion, put it down, as Rob said, it needs to be unanimous.
It has to be unanimous.
I'm sorry, I'm not-
So is this, this, this is just to look into it?
I'll look into it regardless, but just, just for my own satisfaction in terms of going, cause this has kind of got question marks written all over it.
Like you saying that if they're gonna go do a local and private, it's gotta be a-
Correct.
Right, right.
If I go do a local and private, it doesn't do me no good to do it.
And let me ask you this, is it gonna encompass all three of the campuses when you get this done?
I can look at it, I can look at it.
I think it's just the group that these-
This wasn't asked for that, it was asked for this.
That's what I'm asking, is it just for a group? It, that's what I'm asking, is it just for this organization or is it for the school district?
It would be for this organization. And keep in mind, we would have to check off to make sure the state auditor's okay with this. I mean, there's a, there's a check box that has to be done. But, but the, the, the main thing is, and, and this is not just for this, this is for any kind of local and private I do, or anyone else does.
Yeah.
Um, we have to be unanimous as a board determining that, because if it's not, it's kicked out. You remember a couple of years back, whenever, uh, uh, Lawrence County had an issue with some of their local and private, their two percent money?
Yeah.
And they got into a discussion when they lost it? That was the reason.
Cause it was not unanimous.
Cause it was not unanimous.
I have a question in relation to that. We could do a local and private award to that particular organization. Therefore leaving that organization with the opportunity to pay someone to, to do the cleanup. But we, we do that, we do that all the time. We award, we award local and private fund.
You could, you, you, you could, as long as it's all unanimous, but, and that they are one of the organizations that are allowed to do it, and I don't know whether they are or not. They are or not, let me phrase it differently.
Is the school district, are, are those board members, are they aware of the request from this group?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. But is the, are the school district board members, are they aware of the request from the-
The school district, I mean, I've talked to them, they're aware, I mean, matter of fact, they're the ones that, that have allowed them to go out there and use the, the facilities. Um, matter of fact, I think they may have gone out there and cut the grass, whenever all this kind of was said and done. Now, that being said, let me be very clear, this group has volunteered and gone out there and done a lot of this work themselves, so I don't wanna suggest that they have done a lot of work done for them.
As far as the school, is that, and I know that's the school, but is it legal for the school to allow that?
They are, they're allowed, the school can do whatever they want to, it's their property.
Okay.
Um, from our perspective, we can't. We, I mean, unless I get some kind of special okay to do it, we can't do it. And, and that's part of the problem, they don't understand, they think y'all are just being, I think they think that y'all are just being dingy, dingy or whatever, whatever you wanna call it. But y'all's hands are tied in a lot of ways with this, and that's the problem.
But now what we could do, uh, and I guess this would be consolation to you, I'd just like to make the motion that we, uh, leased it, at, at the board supervisor, leased the school property at East October Hall High School. That don't have to go to the legislature, that doesn't have to be a unanimous vote.
But you can't just let them use it?
Yes, we can.
You're the lease?
I like you to have to lease it.
Well, I mean, it, it will be the responsibility of, of the board supervisor, and we'll have to determine exactly what we're gonna use it for, whatever we're gonna do in this, whatever. But you won't have to go to the legislature to get that.
That is true, and for a public, for a, that may be something we wanna look at at some point. I mean, my question for, for y'all is, do you want me to, to try to, to jump through that hoop, and I'm kinda hearing that maybe-
Well, see, we, we, unless they can convince John and Bricklet to support it.
I just, Will.
You know, and that, and maybe they may, can do that, they may can lobby them and they may change their mind.
I think the county taxpayer gets watered down on what they're receiving.
I wanted, the, the, the young lady had called me and, and asked me to, to present this, and I wanted to do what I was, what she asked me to do. So I, I've, I've done that.
Sure.
Thank y'all, that's all.
But I think we can lease that property at a reasonable, at a reasonable approach. And I mean, when I say reasonable, probably very reasonable, because, and I'm not talking about the deal that we had talked about last time with the deal on exchange and all that stuff. All that, that's, that's, that's a whole different-
You're talking about just more.
Just, just-
East October.
East October, if we wanna get the other school that's available too, if you wanna get Wes, you can get that too, for county purposes. I know one of the things we need to do with, with East down here, we need another satellite area, satellite shop in that area, because that's a long way down there, trying to come from C Shop, bringing material and stuff hauling from C Shop, trying to get down there, trying to keep our roads up. So that would be an advantage to the county to have another place where we can, uh, store material. Uh, you know, you can make a voting precinct out of it, you know, you can, you can get the voting precinct out of, uh, out of our top community center. You know, it's, it's a lot of uses that you, that we can utilize before. One time somebody said something about using it for doing some training for the, uh, share department, you know, there's a lot of things that can be done on that property, so.
Yeah, I mean, that would be something to look at, for sure, on that.
That's, that's-
What will we have to do to get a price of what it will cost to lease that?
Well, two things, we, we can present a proposal in there, or we can let them know and then let them come back and present a proposal back up. I mean, you know, you can go at it, you can look at it a lot of different ways, and the school at Maven's gonna be even easier than this one, because the school at Maven's is not sixteen section private. You know, there, you probably can get it for, it'll be a lot easier getting it at Maven than you would be getting another private. But right now, they've already indicated they have no desire to use either one of those locations.
The school, the student.
They have no desire to use either one of those locations. And, uh, they are, they have some things, but they're planning and doing some things in the future that'll probably be presented, I guess, you know, with the school district's long range plan. But none of their long range plans involve doing anything with either one of those sites.
But I would urge, and I, anytime I see a board member, um, I do urge them to take care of that property. You know what I mean, that is, even if you don't plan on using your property, if it is your property, you don't just say, well, I'll walk away from it. Um, but, but that's, you know, a lot of moving parts on that, for sure. Anything else?
Um, I, I think without going forward, uh, we should at least come up with a proposal to present to the school district, our request of what we, what we would like to give as a lease agreement, at least payment. And I would think that Attorney Robinson, you would develop that proposal.
Would it, would it be okay with this board for me to, to, to call Dr. Hassan and have a conversation about this generically, instead of us doing any kind of formal at this point? Because we may have some opportunities.
We got to take it.
We, we may have other opportunities that, that can, can, can deal with this, and I'd like to do something that would be as inexpensive to this, this board as we possibly can, uh, if, if that meets y'all's approval.
Do we have a timeframe that we're working on, or what you're planning on doing?
This legislative session would be, would be a good timeframe. The, the next three to four months.
Three.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Anything else?
All right.
If not, we discussed a lot, and I know it's pushing seven thirty, uh, we need to adjourn until, what would that be? March fourth.
No, we, 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 uh, did twenty-four.
Twenty-four. We'll adjourn to the twenty-fourth, need a motion of the secretary to adjourn. Motion by supervisor Williams, second by trainer, all in favor.
All right, have a good night.